Good morning, good afternoon, everyone. This is another Parks and Recreation special meeting Tuesday, November 4th. We're in the Bonnie Osler Meeting Room, from the Lewis Committee Meeting Room. Tonight, we really have one item on the agenda, but we'll start with roll call. Could we go around the room? And everyone say their name into the microphone to help AI recognize our voices.
Julia Kirsch.
Mark Shu.
Ray Fratella.
Barry Duncan.
Marty Thompson.
Kay Conahan.
Rodney Robinson.
Tim Ritzer.
Thank you. Main item of business tonight is new business, discussion of possible action regarding the reforestation of the farm field off of New Road. And we do have some visual aids with this one. I will say, when we originally set up this meeting, this was to have a different purpose in that we were trying to step back and go through the process of this kind of item coming to Parks and Rec. Marty had been contacted directly, so she, of course, responded directly. However, Mayor and City Council had a meeting last night and have determined to move forward with it with conditions. And so tonight will really be informative for us rather than voting, I believe. And we will have a presentation, it's my understanding, by Marty, Barry, and Rodney. So if one of you would begin, that would be great, because we appreciate all your help.
I'm going to start out by asking, for the two of you who are not there, and not involved so far, have you looked at the PowerPoint that was attached to the agenda?
Yeah, I also viewed last night's meeting as well.
Yeah, and I watched it on the web this morning.
So I won't go over the big PowerPoint again, because you've already seen it. What I did is I looked at the Zoom of that meeting and I pulled off the key points in the motion. It's kind of complicated motion, but hopefully I got it all. No, the other one?
It was, it was a complicated motion, so that's why I didn't want to give details, because I wasn't sure. Some of it was deleted and adjusted, and so...
This is, this is my first attempt at capturing what was said, just for information. When the official minutes come out, that'll be the official record of what that motion was, so take this for what it's worth. But this, this will give you a basic idea. So Mayor and City Council decided that the city should apply for the Forest Resiliency Fund to plant trees. Part of that will be placed in meadow, up to forty percent of that land will be put in meadow, the rest in trees. The council's intent is for the space to remain as natural as possible. I'm not sure that was the final wording, but that's approximate, that's the gist of it. It turns out that there appears to be some archaeological sites there that where indigenous artifacts had been found in the past. Some of them point roll, actually. So we're going to get clarification on where those areas are. They're described as the northwest. But when I look at the northwest, I'm not sure what that means. But anyway, we're going to try to get clarification on that. I think the idea would be we'd not plant trees there, because the tree roots could go down and perhaps disturb something. We would leave that in meadow or something. Anyway, we'll respect that area. They decided they don't want, and I made references a couple of times to people walking their dogs back there. They don't want dogs to walk back there, because of course, that could be a disservice to the wildlife, so no pets will be allowed. This will be funded by the Resiliency Fund, which is managed by the Economic, Environmental, and Resiliency Commission, ERC. The city manager will consult with Commissioner, PRC Commissioners, Rodney, Barry, and Marty. There is one bullet, another bullet I forgot to put on here. The mayor specifically said we need to be keeping the public informed. There's a great deal of interest in this, that this room was almost full. So we'll have to be keeping the public informed, but we know all. So. Anything to add, Barry, Rodney?
The only thing that I would say in terms of the whole issue is a number of times, people questioned the definition of open space. And I think that's something that City Council is going to address. The code, the city code, or zoning, or whatever you call it, open space is pretty broadly worded, which Janelle said, you know, you could build a library there. And from what I understand, there is no code, nothing in the zoning that is open space preservation, whatever, conserva- whatever. So that's something that the Planning Commission has got to address. I think this is a good step in preserving that open space. But just because we plant a few trees in there, doesn't mean that we can't, people can't come up with reasons to do things. I mean, it's a lot easier to mow down a few little seedlings than it is to tear down a whole forest, which they do to build houses all over the place. So I think that's one, one thing that was important to note about that.
I would suggest they even consider the designation of permanent open space, because we're waiting for that to be used in the community, and that's to reflect. Well, that's, that's, there's open space, and then there's a designation of permanent open space that has not been used yet. We have the definition, we're waiting.
There's no, there's nothing in the, that's what they said.
There's something in the code, there's...
It's permanent.
For instance, she said, wouldn't need a permit to give somebody approval to come and put beekeeping in this space. You wouldn't need a permit to come in and put a commercial, you know, vendor stand in here, so.
Right, that's why I'm saying permanent could be a way to lock it into the thought that we have.
Or at least, or at least require a whole lot more process.
That's what I'm saying, there is nothing, there's, there's no, there's no zoning like that.
It exists, it just hasn't been used. It's a use within.
No, I...
So anyway.
It's like architectural, or agricultural, or retail, or residential. We have an open space thing, but there's nothing that specifically is conserving, in that...
Well, there's nothing conservation.
You've done, actually, Barry, a good job of describing the discussion last night. I believe what Janelle also advised, in addition to when she listed what could occur in open space, she also went on to say that if there was a initiative, I'll call it, to build that library, or build some kind of city building on city-owned property, it would have to go through conditional use, review, and approval, which is a public process. And if last night's representation by this room being filled, as Kay described, is representative of the interests and intent of this community for the future, I can't imagine that there would ever be public support for conditional use. But that's to be determined by a future council and a few, you know, people who aren't here right now. But I understand your, the point you're making about, about creating language. And Barry is correct, it was suggested that it be referred to the Planning Commission to take up the conservation and preservation issue.
Right, because we hadn't had that example of, you know, returning a parcel to a prior condition. What we had was, we had to define things, Swan and Dale Park, it's a park that has a library in it. So we have to say, you can have a library in it. You know, we have a park here with a library. So we had to take things that reflected what's happening. So we don't, but we don't want that to prevent what you want to happen on this parcel. So Planning Commission can certainly get around that and create something that suits probably both Fourth Street and this. They could both go in it.
Right, although there is the conservation easement that's placed on Fourth Street, so that is...
Has different constraints.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, and easement is different than a planning, a...
A zone.
A zoning.
Right.
Condition.
But as long as you get where you want to go.
Exactly.
So can we look at the next slide on this deck? This is the last slide on this deck. This is just the first rough cut of what this may or may not look like in the end, but it's the first rough cut. So the bright yellow lines, I envision having a mowed, mowed trail so that we can get where we need to go with, you know, trucks would have you. Whether it'll actually be this or not, I feel very strongly there should be a mowed trail as a barrier on the border between the residential areas and the new road field, just to prevent a corroboration from either side, so. And so we know where to mow, we know where to, you know, plant the trees back from the border, and so we can get to those trees, et cetera. But time will tell whether this is what we end up doing. We will need a way to get to the meadow and do things from time to time, hopefully. At some point, we'll have truckloads of shrubs and plants to come in and plant, but we'll see how that goes. Anyway, the other thing about this is it will fully end up fully reforesting the buffer between the field and Canary Creek subdivision. It was supposed to be fully forested from the get-go, and it wasn't. So it'll fill that with trees, and that was a commitment made to Canary Creek HOA a while back. It, it, it's an attempt to maximize order between the meadow and the forest, and that's where a lot of the important things happen with wildlife, so you want to maximize that. In fact, we may end up not having these straight lines, having these curved lines. We'll just develop that as we go. We don't have to have that final plan until later. The other thing is, it's back from, it's back from where the Great Marsh is, you know. There's in the south, basically the south side of this field, you see kind of a line of, there's trees and shrubs there. And on the other side of those trees and shrubs is the marsh in Canary Creek. Comments were made about sometimes that rises, well, as Barry, or as Rodney has pointed out many times, meadow is much better resiliency, has much better resiliency from flooding, and especially saltwater flooding than trees do. So this area would kind of be a buffer there. If we do have an overflow and it backs up, we'll be dealing with meadow rather than trees in that area, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is subject to further changes as we develop it, and then we'll talk to the state forester about it and come up with a final plan later.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, there's a lot to work out. There's no design yet. There's a concept on what should be forested and what should be left unforested. And as Marty says, this concept that you see now maximizes the length of the edge between meadow and forest, and that's really important. The more edge we have, the better it is for wildlife. And so that's kind of what you see here. There were, there were some questions about, well, you know, what are we in for with a meadow, what kind of investment we have to make? Right now, we have an old field in, in early, very early stages of succession. And things are coming up, and things that are germinating, that seeds may be in the soil for years and years, and things that are getting blown in or dropped in by birds. So, you know, it's a wait and see. Let's see what happens, and let's see how we have to manage it. Recommendation I made last night was that the city should mow, once we know where the trees are going to go. The city should mow that and get it ready for spring planting by the state. Everything else should be left alone. There's no need to mow it right now. Next year, maybe. And when we do go to mow it, typically in a meadow, since it is a habitat and it's full of wildlife, from insects and birds to field mice and everything else. You don't want to cut it all at once, you want to cut it in parcels, Gary. And, and we talked about that last night. So, you know, we have those strategies to figure out, there's no rush on any of that. The one question that I would ask, and I don't know what the answer is, but it's not clear to me what role the Parks and Recreation Commission plays, is it going to play in an open space like this? Is it going to be a continuation of, of just keeping Parks and Rec informed, or, or is, is, because we have Great Marsh Park right next door, and more than next door, it kind of surrounds it. And Barry, and Barry's in charge of that, the commissioner responsible for it. And we, even though that's state-owned property, but it is the city's property for all intents and purposes, does, does this twenty-acre parcel become part of Great Marsh Park in terms of management strategies and, and where resources are spent in the future? Because there's a lot of work to be done in Great Marsh Park. I'm not looking for any answers or any opinions, I'm just saying that these are the kind of things that the city's going to have to address. And in what role does the PRC play in that, I don't know.
I, I agree, that was my question from last night, because it's not a small parcel, and even if you just want to go and check in on it once a quarter, that's still a devotion of a lot of walking.
I just want to make sure that what we're doing is in concert with what we're doing in Great Marsh Park, you know. For example, if we don't have enough gum trees in Great Marsh Park, for example, then maybe we plant some there and vice versa. And I also want to work with, I also want to work with the University of Delaware, because even though we that's not our responsibility, the trees and the forest that surround University of Delaware are going to affect what we do. I walk, you know, there's a path that goes all the way down to the water, and as I walk by there, I know that we've removed a lot of invasive species, the Bradford pears, but as I walk past the bridge and down to the water, there's all these autumn olives and Bradford pears. And could we, as a group, encourage them, you know, to remove invasive species? Because, you know, all those seeds are going to blow over to where we are. So I think I'm, I'm looking at it as in more of a, kind of a global perspective.
May I ask a question about that, Barry? Has any, have you or anyone from the commission communicated a to the university?
Well, that's, I've been trying to find out who's the head honcho or whatever there, but that's my...
I have that person's name, I'm happy to provide it to.
But until we have the lease agreement renewed, we need to wait before we do anything, and that's been made.
Okay, so.
Clear, yes.
I don't see anything wrong with communicating with people.
No, communicating is fine, but actually, like, getting into any kind of an agreement, we do not have a lease agreement yet.
I mean, I think there's conversation to be had with, with them. I mean, you know, why couldn't they apply for invasive species grants and do exactly what we did? It's just a matter of coordinating.
And making them aware of...
Yeah, I mean, here, all the way down that path are autumn and Bradford pears. They could maybe, I don't know, and it, you know, maybe it's a matter...
Asking.
Yeah, a matter of getting in touch with whoever's in charge of facilities or grounds there, or whatever.
Well, just bring them up to speed about what's happening.
Exactly. I mean, it's all part of the community, and, and all of this, and people that live here, want to go to a park, they don't, they don't care whether it's a preserve or it's University of Delaware. They're walking on a path, you know, they're getting exercise. You know, people are not going to, they're going to call the Fourth Street Forest a preserve. Some people still call it the Fourth Street Forest, but it's a park to them. You know, who manages it and how we coordinate, that's up to us, how we do that.
Well, and I think that's a good point, too, just thinking globally as well, where we're acquiring all these different properties. Like, where does the Fourth Street Preserve fit into this? Is it part of this, or should it be part of this? You know, we're not, and that's also a conversation or a determination I think we should, you know, at least entertain.
Well, I think those, that parcel and this parcel have a lot of the same elements and goals. So I think, you know, and this is new compared to, you know, with other things that are going on, and so it's going to take a little thinking, but it makes sense. To me, it makes sense to contact the university and just say, we see you as part of this. This is what we have.
I mean, there's all kinds of things we can cooperate with, whether it's maintenance, cutting, whether it's academically, I mean, they have a whole environmental
major.
Major there, and, 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 you know, marine science, and there's, there's all kinds of... I mean, the only other question I have, as we work with the state, is it their intention to eventually just give it to the city? I mean, I don't know how that's worked in other situations, but my guess is they want to take that off their role, so they don't have to manage it. I don't know.
Or be responsible.
Right, right.
If I can say, I think, you know, this was made clear last night that this particular parcel is really under the purview of the ERC, the Economic, Environmental, and Resiliency Commission. Because they're spending the money. And so they're, they're basically, which is the city, it's a part of the city, of course, but they're basically going to be controlling what we do there, and, and in the Fourth Street Preserve, that's also being supervised in an advisory basis by ERC. So that works, and I'm on the task force of that, and we report to a subcommittee of ERC to, in terms of what's going on and the monies that's being raised, you know, going to be spent, and so on and so forth. So you've got kind of a different part of the city looking at these properties versus Parks and Recreation Commission. It's not, you know, and so there is a clear division, but how, how long does that go on? I don't know.
Well, I mean, the other thing...
Somebody does.
The other thing that I heard from the council is that they wanted myself and Rodney to work with Marty to give another set of eyes, so I don't know whether it's sort of a committee or a...
It was my understanding that the city manager, Eleanor Rain, would be expected to call upon you to shape the, I'll call it the plan, or, you know, how we're going to move forward here. I, I'm not sure, maybe Marty can speak to this about, I... Marty, would there be any expectation that the three of you would be talking to the forestry as it relates to the grant? Or would that, in my mind, it comes, your input would come after, or maybe with...
Grant comes through, is coming through the city.
I understand.
Through me and through Marty.
I will...
I understand.
I'll explain it this way, the way grants have worked in the past.
Right.
There's always a city staff person who's the main point of contact.
That's correct.
Usually it's Julia, in recent years, it was before that Jenna, before that Allison. But as far as tree planting grant, I've always been deeply involved, too. So when there's a site visit, I'll be out there, too, usually, if I can, if I'm exiled, sometimes I'm not exiled. And when there's decision-making and communication about a subject matter, I've always been involved. I'm assuming that's the way it'll work this time, because on paper, Julia will be the point of contact, I get a lot of the phone calls, but when there's a site visit, I expect us all to be there and talk about how to work it in order. And I expect us to all be involved in what this final map is going to look like.
And when you say all, you're talking about the three of you.
The three of us.
Correct.
That's my, because it's the same, the same person that's doing, that will do this, is the same person at the state that was, has been asked to do a forestry management plan for Great Marsh Park. I already had that asked.
I see.
And I was already directed to her, but we decided to hold off on it.
Right.
So that's a good thing that, you know.
Right. And I think the critical thing that was accomplished last night is, is that the application for the grant has been green-lighted, and that can move forward. And then at some point in time between now and I'll call it springtime, that far out, that the expectation is that the forester will be onsite, come to the Lewis, and you all will meet with her and onsite, walk the field, and come up with some kind of a plan. And then inform ERC, and also, I would like to think that you'll come back and just keep this body informed as well.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's the strategy.
Yeah.
I have one question about the plan. The arrow, the right-hand arrow at the top, the line of trees there, are those Osage orange trees?
Where? Yes.
Here. This line.
Oh, the circles, the dots, the ones within this parcel. These right here. Those, with the dot, okay, this is a screenshot of...
Well, that's where the Osage orange goes across the road.
There are a few Osage orange that are back there.
Because that's, that was the old hedgerow that's had to be preserved when Canary Creek was developed.
That buffer between Canary Creek subdivision and the meadow, yeah. A lot of that is the original hedgerow.
Right.
So I don't know whether it's an idea, whether that's something to expand on or not.
You mean more Osage orange?
Right, because that was the whole point, I mean, that they had to be preserved as part of Canary Creek's development.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you what, growing whether you want to, that's up to or not. They keep growing. If you leave it alone, you get more Osage orange, black cherry, more holly trees, more eastern red cedar, more lawlolly pine, it's all in there. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunity for maintenance in that row also. I've walked that period, not in the last two years, but prior to that, and there's a lot of...
There's a lot could be done if we had funding.
But that could be part of ERC, you know.
Well, we did, I did a small project this spring of 2024, because commitment had been made to, you know, clean up that area and reforest that buffer. So I did a small project, I did get a grant from the state to plant twenty trees, and as part of that grant, we could prepare the land. So in, in the buffer next to where the trees were planted, we did go in there and have a contractor remove a lot of invasive and tree, so they wouldn't come back. And then we planted those twenty trees. The trouble is, keeping the evasives at bay is a non-stop issue. So they're, they haven't all come back, but there's some creeping back in, because unless you keep after it all the time, they just keep coming back. And, and I, I ended up saying, you know, I don't, I don't know how we're going to do this whole line with just urban community forestry grants. I mean, I was only able to do, I forget how long it was, but it's twenty trees. And, and that's ways at a time, and, and I could have, I could have done that, oh, I think one calculation was, you know, do it for seventeen years but by that time, you know, you come around and the first part is still, is back, and, you know, I mean, it's it's really a tough problem, it's a tough issue, and I would love somebody who, well...
Well, maybe that's...
I am hopeful that if we have tree, taller trees growing over here.
In the field area?
Well, some of the evasives will be limited, because some of the trees, it's, it's, this is an edge, and the sun's coming in. If that edge isn't there, some of the evasives will not be as vigorous. So you know what the edge of a forest always looks like. So anyway, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions on how to improve that situation.
Any other comments?
Sweet suggestion.
I think it's, I think this is a big thing. This is a big project, it's an important project, and it's going to take some manpower to do it justice, I think.
Yeah, if I could say, you know, it's going to, there's going to be a lot of mowing, a lot of mowing on a regular basis. Certainly in around the trees, and these are little, you know, bare-root saplings. And you, you, you plant those because it's inexpensive, you plant them densely because you're going to lose a lot. Okay, that's the strategy, and it works. But, and even though they will have... But and even though they will have the the tubes sheltered, tube shelters put around them. They're not going to grow as fast as this other stuff that's that's coming up and it's very aggressive. And so the only way to control that, the woodies is to mow and at least once a year. And mowing more than that is going to encourage grasses, but still knock knock the woodies out. They're not going to grow so fast that they're going to start shading things out anytime soon. The estimate of two to three years, I don't expect them to be big enough to be casting shade to to avoid having to mow. So we're going to have to mow. That's just, that's what you do. Eventually, they'll get they'll get big enough that they will shade. And and if you keep mowing, you are encouraging grasses and the grasses will come in and they'll occupy the ground and they will, they will play a big role in keeping the the autumn olive and and other things and and the pears from coming in there because they're occupying the ground space. But that's what it, that's what it takes. When I was a kid, my I grew up in the country, my father planted 5,000 white pines on the property. It's just the way they're doing these and little dry root, stick them in the ground, you know. And we had to keep mowing it. And if you didn't mow it suddenly, and there was a while where we didn't mow it and you couldn't hardly see the pines for the for the for the tree, no, for the trees coming up. But you know, the once you, if you have some black cherries around, they seed in like crazy. Now, they're wonderful trees for insects, but you don't want them to shade out the pines and and evergreens will be shaded out by any deciduous tree. So, you know, I remember one weekend we had a major scout troop come and spend, you know, a long day on our property. My father cutting the trees with the chainsaw and the Scots, the scouts hauling them all out to a giant burn pile where we burned them. But that's what it took to save the pines.
So so when this mowing is done, someone will someone will need to be present. No, as a guide.
I think I don't think so because the trees, the trees will be in a tube. You'll clearly see where the trees are and 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 if the state is responsible, they're responsible for the first mowing.
First couple of years, right?
Couple of years and and that'll that'll go a long way to 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 getting that established and getting the grasses established and things that that are going to be growing in and among the trees. And then they'll come and they're going to take the shelters away. Is that correct?
Eventually.
When, I mean, when it's time for them to go.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what the they 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 pay for tree tube maintenance to, the 90% of the tree tube maintenance to. And and so, yeah, they'll have to be a decision tree on when when to remove them entirely, you know.
They make enough of a commitment to get the things established. And then it's then it's on the city.
But I I I agree that have to mow it at least once a year. I'm
Oh, more than that.
Probably twice with with grasses.
At least it was.
This is, yeah.
May I ask a question about the mowing? Is the expectation, I'm I this is, I'm trying to learn, okay? I don't know the answer here. They'll actually be mowing between the tru- the trees, right? The saplings, is that right? Okay.
Well, between this.
Right.
And in fact, that's one of the reasons they want them in columns and rows so you can see it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Right. Yeah.
Well, I mean, typically they just go like this and like back, they don't. I don't think they're going to go around each tree.
No, I'm not. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you want, if you want to see what it looks like, go to McCabe Nature Conservancy out in Milton and they they did a project maybe four or five years ago. I think some of the tubes are still up. If you want to see a project that's
Underway.
Underway, maybe three or four years down the road. It's right off of round Pole Bridge Road.
All right.
So it sounds like you guys have this well in hand and
Sounds like what?
You have it well in hand.
Well, I think I think we'll also
You have a plan and
You know, depend on the State Forest Service to give us advice as to how to do that. I mean, that's what they do. And yeah, I mean, they've probably done umpteen things like this.
Right.
I mean, it's new to us, but
Right.
Not certainly not new to them.
That's why you go to those people.
Exactly.
Not reinvent the wheel. Any other comments? In that case, are there any?
Adjourn.
Are there any public comments?
Public comment, I was forgetting about.
Wow. Are there? Look at me, yeah. Jewish Terrell.
I'm sure George Terrell said archaeologist Dan Griffith, former director of Division of Historical and Cultural Faces, where the planet admittedly familiar with the previously discovered Lewis sites. Two two distinct sites on this parcel. The Russell site has evidence of prehistoric woodland period Native American and Dutch. The Old House site is among the hedgerow between the Canary Creek development into the field. Previous site plans by BB ownership and Canary Creek ownership indicate the exact locations and approximate size. Both sites were considered eligible for designation of historic places. There's consensus that undiscovered artifacts likely exist. And Mr. Griffith suggested last week that awareness and consideration of discovered and undiscovered artifacts being made to the forestry personnel. Multiple maps and articles available. Smithsonian has retained some artifacts, including a skeleton from the Russell site. And then he said, thank you to Marty for bringing this to the city. George Terrell, 55 of you wrote.
Great.
Yeah.
Good.
Excellent. And Christine, do you have anything to add to the?
No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So the archaeological importance has been pointed out and asked your question. And any other comments?
Beautiful. Where was this issue?
In that case, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion is second, all in favor?
Where did you go?
I.